I'd like to call this October 24th, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
I am here.
Ms. Stachek?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausman?
Here.
We are all eagerly present.
Yeah.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sharon is hyped up for this meeting.
Yes.
Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan, which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. We have four priorities: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. And all of our decisions are made according to those goals. Next, we have OSBA Student Achievement. Mrs. Colbain, Ms. Stachek.
So with OSBA Student Achievement, we normally nominate, or we have the principals at every school nominate a faculty member and a student for the award. A few months ago, Sharon and I took it upon ourselves to create our own nominations. You might remember, we surprised George and Cameron and Jenny with nominations and told each other that we were nominating each other, but then we nominated them all. It was so exciting. And we also, upon going into all of our building visits that we did last year, there was somebody that really stood out, somebody and somebody else that really stood out to us as a really pivotal part of our district that not everybody knows about. And so I would really gladly like to introduce you to Officer Miller and Storm. Could he come up here?
We watched Storm interact with all of the kids at recess, and he did like a great job. Didn't he go down the slide at one storm?
He did everything.
Yes, he did. He's great. So we wanted to introduce him to everyone. And, oh, look at him.
And there are kids that they have difficulty speaking or finding the words to do something. Their first words are "dog" because of Storm. And it helps them to communicate. It helps them to emotionally and physically get connected to someone or something. And it was really wonderful to watch you, Officer Miller, with Storm interacting with the kids. I don't know which one of them was more excited to go out to the playground, interact with the kids. They both seemed like it. I know you're thinking, "I'm wearing this for Halloween," but I'm wearing it because your favorite word is "k-i-t-t-y." So it's really for you. He also likes "b-u-b-b-l-e-s," but I won't say it right now.
Okay.
Woof!
Oh, my God. Does he spelt?
Woof, woof!
Well, maybe he does.
But he knows what that means. Is there anything you'd like to say about your job within the district, what you do on a daily basis, what you see that other people might not realize?
When I was young and dumb, you know, I've been on night shift for 24 years, so...
Here, stand here. They can all hear you.
You didn't tell me how to speak. Going out there and getting into stuff at night, getting in pursuits, lots and lots of pursuits, and resistings, and drug arrests. Until I got the dog and started spending time at the schools, especially the early learning center, the satisfaction is so much different and greater when you see these kids interacting with this mean dog. This dog has five apprehensions, meaning he's gone after people running from us and bit them and took them down. But when you see him interacting with these kids, you'd never know that. You wouldn't guess that he has that ability in him. But yeah, over the years, maturing that little bit and seeing how he is invaluable to some of these kids. They're having temper tantrums, they're punching walls. And as soon as Storm gets involved, they instantly change that channel and calm down.
Oh, so he wants it back.
It's fantastic. It's much more rewarding than, in some ways, catching some of these turds that come into the city and do bad things. So yeah, that's kind of where we've evolved. This will be his last year, so maybe March, April, he might retire. So I'm kind of sad to see him go, but hopefully I've had some influence with the next dog handler. And we'll see if he becomes like Storm. His name is Jax. And we'll see if he can kind of take his place in the schools and get involved a little more. So...
Storm, do you want to go shake paws with everybody?
No.
Want to go this way? Good job, Storm. Thank you so much. It really is amazing to see how he interacts with each child
Woof, woof!
and sees the demeanor of each child and how he needs to react. If he should be standing, if he should be sitting, if he should be...
Woof, woof!
Geez, and we didn't even mention me who beat the...
Thank you, Officer Miller, for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you and Storm. Do a great...
Woof, woof!
Bye-bye. Go get all the kitties.
Bye.
We've been talking about this dog and Officer Miller for like months now, constantly. We get like pictures of him swimming in his sunglasses and at the gym and dressed up for things. He's the best little thing, so it's amazing. So it shows you not only what you don't see, especially their early childhood with the preschool, but what other members of our community, the police officers, are doing that otherwise they didn't even realize they had the capacity or the power to have within our school district. And next, without further ado, we have Mr. Griffin to do the nominations for Maraski Elementary School.
It's going to be tough to follow a dog that can spell. But I think we got two great candidates.
But can you bark?
You said what?
Can you bark?
I don't know if it's the appropriate time. Only on Sundays, I hope. So first off, I want to thank the board for inviting us in to give these honors. It's such a great way to recognize the people that are in our district and in our community. And we have two wonderful members of our community and our schools here with you today. So I'm going to first have our student recognition, our student honoree, come on up. Ethan Saloom. So Ethan, I'm going to say a few words about you real quick. Every time I'm asked to do this, it's incredibly difficult. We have so many just awesome students in our school who accomplish so many great things inside and outside of the classroom. But when I started to narrow kind of that choice down and talk to some staff members, one name kept coming up, and that was Ethan's. As a student who, he just works so incredibly hard in our school. He's one of the most determined students I know and works to accomplish goals that he and his teachers set together. Knowing that sometimes learning is difficult and is going to be a challenge, Ethan continues to work hard. He shows up for intervention and for class, just ready to go, and is so determined to do his best each and every day. As a student, he demonstrates pride and models expectations all the time. He consistently does this for himself, and he does it for his classmates, often taking charge and reminding his peers of the right thing to do. It's not infrequent to see Ethan kind of giving a classmate a lecture because they're not doing the right thing, because he understands expectations and wants everybody to be the best model Mustang they can be. Ethan is a student who's involved outside of the classroom as well. Ethan's engaged in our homecoming float. He's engaged in extracurricular activities and wants to do everything he can to be a part of and represent Maraski in a positive way within our community. Ethan's a student who wants Maraski to be a better place. When we first got our mobile learning units, there was no other student I would rather get feedback from than Ethan. And he gave me honest feedback. He told me about them, about our procedures, and was very, very excited to be learning in the mobile learning units. He gave us feedback about our Mustang Market, which is our new PBIS incentive. He's open with us and gives honest feedback, and he tells it like it is. In the five years I've gotten to know Ethan, it's been a privilege, and he is an absolute model Mustang. Ethan's teachers had this to say about him. Ethan consistently goes above and beyond expectations, demonstrates a remarkable commitment to learning, and a genuine enthusiasm for our Maraski community. He is always prepared for class, actively participates in discussions, and offers ideas that enrich our classroom environment. We are incredibly proud to have Ethan in our classrooms and look forward to seeing all the great things he will achieve in his future. So it's easy to see that Ethan is so deserving of this award, so it's my pleasure to recognize you, Ethan, as the extra mile student recipient at Maraski.
You sure are. He's so modest and humble, isn't he? Ethan was very humble. We went in and he was so shocked that he was the person. So that's a good quality.
Take a picture real quick?
Sure. Go ahead and check out his hand, isn't that how they're going to meet you? Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
So just like Ethan, our staff honoree for the extra mile award is equally incredible. Staff members who go the extra mile not only want what's best for them or their students, they want what is best for the building and the district as a whole. Lauren Hobie, who I'm going to invite up here now, is Maraski's staff award winner and does just that. Mrs. Hobie wants what is best for herself. And what I mean by that is she pushes herself to learn new strategies for instruction. For example, she's piloting our new CKLA curriculum, one of our third-grade teachers who's really putting herself out there. But she's learning that. She goes above and beyond to get better in the classroom through reflection and learning all the time. And another example is we integrated a new resource in our school using vertical whiteboards to kind of challenge students to be more collaborative in their learning. The day of our staff meeting where we kind of presented this, Mrs. Hobie came up and said, "Can I use those boards today?" And immediately integrated that strategy into her classroom. And she does that stuff all the time. Not only because she wants what's best for her students, but she's willing to push herself as a staff member and do what's best for instruction. Mrs. Hobie wants what is best for her students. She challenges them to set goals in the classroom, learn from their mistakes, and work together to learn and grow. Here are a few quotes from the students I talked to leading up to this evening. One student said, "I love Mrs. Hobie because she makes learning fun. We work hard, but we also get to have fun and play games that help us learn in the classroom." Another student said, "I love Mrs. Hobie because she says it's okay to make mistakes. She helps us learn from our mistakes and helps us in the classroom." And what better examples of model Mustang competencies, such as being determined, being resilient, and also being collaborative and innovative in the classroom? Above all, Mrs. Hobie wants what is best for the school and our district. As I said, Mrs. Hobie is piloting a new curriculum where she's giving feedback and learning so we can be successful in implementing this next year in our district. She's been instrumental in developing our PBIS program, giving insight and ideas on how to build relationships with students, make positive connections, and teach behaviors that impact the culture of our school. She also leads the tech club for our students. So she invites students after school as an extracurricular to kind of engage with technology. But it doesn't stop with just the club. Mrs. Hobie often is a leader in the classroom, showing teachers how they can bring these materials from our maker space and those resources that are tech-based to enhance the learning that happens in the classroom. Strongsville is full of incredible adults who positively impact our students and the community as a whole. But Lauren Hobie goes the extra mile to ensure her impact is felt in the classroom and beyond in Strongsville. It is my pleasure to recognize her as Maraski's staff recipient of the extra mile award. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you so much to Mike and the board for recognizing me with this. I'm really excited for the work that we're doing with some of our vertical learning surfaces and CKLA, and I'm just really excited to see how it'll help other staff and our students as well.
And the kids in her class would love her. Yes, we are. They were over the moon. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
On behalf of the board, I just want to say thank you again to Officer Miller and Storm and Ethan and Ethan's parents. I just want to share that when Ethan came up, he had a million-watt smile on his face. And I was trying to figure out where it came from, and it came from mom and dad because they each have a half a million watt smile on their faces. And the joy and the happiness and the pride is evident, and it's well-earned and well-deserved. And then finally, the smile on Mrs. Hobie's face and her family is also very well-deserved. So congratulations to everyone. I do not have any slips for public comment unless there's anybody dying to make a public comment. This is the time where I tell Ethan he probably has a little bit of homework to complete.
Get out while you can.
And he can escape with his parents and friends.
Good night, everybody.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2024 work session. All district video and audio recording will be a permanent part of the minutes. And next is treasurer's report. Mr. Onagastu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first being the financial report for the month ended September 30th. I'm going to quickly go over the supplemental report, as I usually do. Just one thing with the supplemental reports. It's a new fiscal year, and the report slightly changed a little bit. The format of it made some modifications from the software that we use. Couple of the changes is just more summaries in the beginning. So last month, we did the budget. We did a budget forecast. We budget for salaries and benefits are our largest expenditure. We budget for the actual budget of those positions. And then throughout the year, there's openings. And people come and leave, people go and leave, so it generates some savings. So as we see how it's forecasting against that budget, revenues are trending about $7,000 higher than the budget. Expenditures are trending 71, 791,000 less than the budget, so favorable net impact of 798,000. In comparison to the previous year, revenues so far through September are $822,000 higher. We'll get a little bit into that in the upcoming pages. Expenditures are 1.2 million higher. And then cash is about $4.9 million higher through September of this year. And then cash, this chart is month-by-month by cash. The blue is current year cash balance by month compared to the previous year. But as you will see, I don't know if you can see the mouse on the screen, but it's kind of like almost a roller coaster. Starts down in July, it's a low point. August, we get a tax settlement. And then September, we spend down that tax settlement. October, we spend down that tax settlement. November, we spend down that tax settlement, as well as December and January. And then February, we get a tax advance, so it goes back up. March, we get our settlement. It peaks. And then in April, May, in June, it comes back down and through July. So it ebbs and flows. We get our two big tax settlements, August and March, and then the advance in February. So three times, we get our largest portion of the revenue, and we spend down those dollars throughout the rest of the year. Last year, we ended the last school year at 51.3 million. We're estimated to end this year at 46, 47 million. And granted, that's if Issue 53 does not pass. This forecast didn't include that as expired, and this is considered a new levy on the ballot.
Wait, this is if it doesn't pass?
Correct.
Okay.
In the budget forecast, we didn't have that in there because it needed to be shown without it since it expired. And then as you will see, starting in February, in March, the, in the graph above it, the blue, which represents two years' cash balance, will start dipping below where we were last year, meaning we're spending down that cash and finishing the year with a lower balance. Any questions on that so far? September of this, revenues for September compared to last September, they're almost about the same in total, $17,000 less. State revenue was $199,000 more. It was primarily due to this year, the science reading reimbursement, stipend reimbursement that we received. And then all other revenue is $210,000 lower. And that was due to a Medicaid reimbursement that we received in September of last year. We're still supposed to receive that this year, just hasn't come in yet. So we'll close in October, we haven't received it, so maybe by early November, we'll receive it. So that's more of a timing issue. Looking at fiscal year-to-date below, we're about $822,000 higher in revenues. Local taxes were about $385,000 more. That's more to do with collection rate. Collection rate increased by a percentage. So we saw an additional increase there because of the collection rate. And then state revenues is higher due to the science reading reimbursement. And then all other revenues is $200,000 higher due to, the city tiffs were a little bit higher this year compared to last August. Any questions on revenues before I go to expenditures? September expenditures compared to last September, we're about $729,000 higher. Of that, $346,000 is salaries and benefits, greater than last year. Purchased services is $246,000. Part of the increase there is due to the mobile units that were brought on this year. Utilities are higher. Our insurance was higher, and transportation costs was higher this year. And then all other expenses, as well, is a little higher than last year. Through September to September, and then looking in the bottom to year-to-date through September to this September, we're about $1.2 million higher. Salaries and benefits make up almost $1 million of that increase, and then purchased services is about $200,000. Any questions on expenditures? And then in comparison to the forecast, revenues is trending $7,260 more. It's primarily due to refund of prior expenditures. Still early, so have another nine months to go. So I'll compare to, continue to track revenues as they come in. And then expenditures, they're trending about $791,000 less. Most of it's coming from salaries and benefits due to open positions. We brought in those full-time subpositions to the general fund that, those aren't fully staffed yet. We have some custodial openings, transportation openings. So positions are budgeted, but as less is vacant or people go on FMLA, we realize some savings. And then in comparison, that $791,000 may seem like a large number, but in perspective to our close to $92 million budget, it's 0.9%. And thinking of it this way, if you had a $100 bill to spend, you have 90 cents left over. So, and put it in perspective, because some might see the $800,000 might seem like a large number, but in comparison, it's 0.9%, and it's 90 cents to every $100. Any questions?
Thanks, George.
Yep. All right, then the other items, there's a, two grant awards, the grant approvals. They're both from Batalk for Kids, their OSLN STEM Foundation. The one is, Dave Binkley applied for it. It's a K through six or eight, K through eight? K through eight podcasting grant. Dave is going to buy mobile podcast units and have them at the middle school and elementary schools for kids to use. And then the other one is a K to 12 classroom grant applied by Lawrence Skoda and Jessica Ferenczek for sustainability and technology for a greener future. And then the last item is the amended appropriation. And the only change there is to Fund 19 for the two grant awards. And that concludes my report. If there's no questions?
Any questions for Dave?
George.
Any questions for George?
George.
You could ask Dave questions, too.
Dave, I hope you'll remember to give us the podcast link so that we can start listening to our students' podcasts when they become available. That concludes your report?
Yep.
George?
That does.
Next on our report, on our agenda, superintendent's report, Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I don't have anything specific under my section tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Steve for the business service report for us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. There's three items in this section for your consideration tonight. The first one is transportation for non-public students. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the school bus transportation for the students listed in the exhibit be declared impractical. The time and distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration, and the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education, in lieu of providing transportation, pays parents of students attending these schools. The reimbursement will be based upon the amount allotted by the state. The second item is a BOE compliance presentation with the food services program. Do you want to click on that?
Yep. And I have the clicker on the...
Oh, all right. All right. So the purpose of this is pretty perfunctory, just to say we are complying with the Ohio Revised Code. So just going through and showing you how we're complying with the Ohio Revised Code and also our local ordinances as well. Basically, this is a requirement that we review this with you every year, just to go through how we are complying with the ORC, those numbers there in that order. The first part is that you have nutrition standards that not only are found in the revised code, but also it does give the Board of Education the latitude to provide more stringent requirements than the code allows. We comply with both. Both what the ORC says and what the school board has in your policies and your standards. The first one being a wellness policy compliance. Basically, what this says is that before and during and after school, up to 30 minutes, everything that we serve kids complies with the nutritional standards required by the USDA. That is happening. We're not able, no one's able to come in and compete with us during those times. And that the standards do not apply during non-school hours, on weekends, sporting events, and off-campus fundraising, although fundraising sales should encourage and support lifelong wellness practices. That's why, for example, we can sell Chick-fil-A at certain events, but yet we don't sell it during the school day. It's not that it's bad food. It just doesn't comply with some of the stringent requirements that we have in ORC. The second component of this is also the... The, the second components of this is also the sale and consumption policy compliance. Again, before, during, and thirty minutes after school, um, no other foods are able to be sold other than food that we prepare or that we have purchased, uh, to be consumed. And there's, um, so no one's able to compete with us again. And then also, um, the food sales to staff during the school day and, and students thirty minutes after the end of the school day are at the discretion of, of the Wellness Committee. And we are compliant with that as well. The last one has to do with vending. Uh, last year, we did endeavor to, um, partner with a local vending company. Um, so this is, is in play now where it was not before. What this says is that all products vended and sold must be in compliance with the wellness policy and all of them are vetted. They have to check with everything in those vending machines. Uh, we need to know what they are and they go through a vetting process to make sure, um, that, uh, they're in compliance with all of those guidelines. Um, no one's allowed to sell whenever we are selling out of our food service program. Again, you can see a common theme, no, no compete clause. And then, no food or beverage shall be sold to students any location before, during, after school until the end of the school day. And we are compliant with that as well. The machines are turned off, uh, if during these times and then, you know, complying with that, then they automatically do come on. And then students are able to purchase those. So the current environment of food services, uh, reimbursements are up over last year. So there's a combination of factors that are happening here to have this number go from last year at this point, August and September, we were a hundred and ten thousand, uh, and some change. This year, we're up, uh, a hundred, to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand and some change. Uh, the reason for that is not only are the reimbursements per meal gone up by a few cents, uh, which is important, but also our total meals that we're serving is up across the board. So those numbers are trending in the direction that we want, obviously. It is for a, a, a combination of reasons. Yes, we are getting a few pennies more on all those reimbursements, on those free and reduced lunches, but overall, we are selling more food to students. Um, they are wanting the food that we're selling and so those number, that revenue and those reimbursements are up. And then some of the areas that we're working with Chartwell's to make strides, um, right now, uh, what we've had is a, is a pretty inefficient system of inventory, um, where people are going in old-fashioned style with the pen and the paper into the freezers and the coolers and counting things through the boxes. Uh, Donna's been working very hard to make that all that automated process where it's all barcoded and tagged, make it much more simplistic for our managers and much less time-consuming for our managers so they can spend their time doing other things, um, to, to service the kids in a, in a more efficient way. And then also, one thing that Donna's been able to do is partner with some local universities in their dietitian programs, uh, where she's getting some interns. We should see that here coming, uh, late winter. Um, so it's a mutually beneficial program. Not only do we get some extra hands to help us in an area that we are struggling to find all the hands that, that we need, but also they're bringing with them, um, you know, some of the knowledge that they're getting from schools, uh, getting from programs that we can, you know, bounce ideas off of, share. They then get the experiences, real-world experiences, so as they move through and forward in their career, they can take some of those experiences. So it's a, you know, that's an exciting thing that we've been able to partner with some local universities to bring those people in. And then lastly, um, there's a constant monitoring and tweaking of the menus to see what kids like and get rid and not serve everything that they don't like and then wonder why there's a lot of food in the trash can. So that's always being tweaked, the numbers are always being looked at. Um, I've been in those meetings where, where Donna and the managers sit and talk and converse. And it's that fine line, right? We, we know, we know primarily, especially what elementary students seem to always want, because if you go to a restaurant, it's always the same thing on the menu. There's a reason for that. We're also trying to push some boundaries and get kids experi, you know, um, to have experience with new types of food, see what they like. Um, you know, that, that's a, a fine line of, of where do you invest those resources to help push the kids forward as far as foods and trying new foods? And yet, keep in mind that we are, uh, needing some revenue. So we, we can't have everything thrown to the trash if, if the students don't like it, so. Um, the other thing that we've been doing since, um, we were able to get some, uh, extra funds um, through the, the pandemic and, and the after, aftermath of that, is identifying some new equipment that's needed in each location. So this year, we were able to get a cold serving well at Maraski. So I know that doesn't sound exciting to everybody, but, uh, and what that allows us to do is we don't have to keep putting the food in cups. You know, kids can come by and get a scoop of fruit or they can get, uh, you know, uh, tongs to get their vegetables and put them on a plate. Uh, it, it does save a lot of time in prepping the food so that the kids can come by and, and get the food and, and we don't have to spend as much time, um, putting those food into cups. And we can do other things with that time. All right? So all in all, um, that's the presentation.
Steve, do all the other, do all the other, all the other elementaries have a cold well?
Yes. So that's, that's the presentation as far as I, I know it's, uh, it really is just supposed to go through and, and say that we are complying with everything and, uh, you know, we're working with Chartwell's for the betterment of our food service program, um, you know, and keep it moving forward. And the numbers are showing that that's happening.
Questions for Steve? Do you have a benchmark for the inventory, how much time it's taking?
I do not. Um, I know she's done a couple of different apps. She ran into some issues, so we kinda had to find a new app. Um, but, uh, I would say my best would be the start of the new year, um, to fix those bugs.
I'd be interested after we adopt whatever we choose to adopt, uh, before and after.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
And I would say, Mr. Miko, you know, I've had day interviews with a handful of our managers and that was always something that was brought up to them was the outdated inventory system. Steve has monthly, monthly meetings with all of the managers to have that constant contact to address things that are on their plates. So, uh, I can't tell you exactly how much time they're spending each time, but I know it's something that they've brought up as an area to enhance.
Thank you.
And then the last item in this section is a, a gift to the district. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the following gift be approved. Martin Public Seating donated a memorial chair in honor of Coach William Bear, which will be placed in the Strongsville High School stadium. The estimated value of the donation is two hundred and fifty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, next we'll bring up Erin for the curriculum report.
Good evening. Uh, four items tonight under curriculum for your consideration. Item one is advanced placement testing. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays approximately one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars for advanced placement testing costs, which will then be reimbursed by our participating students. Item two, out-of-state trip. Uh, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School senior class to travel to Washington, D.C. to participate in the Norwalk guided tour, March seventh through ninth, twenty twenty-five. Transportation via chartered motor coach, lodging and meals by the participating students. And just as a note of reference, this was our eighth grade class that didn't get a chance to go to D.C., um, during twenty twenty COVID. So they're getting a chance now as seniors. Item three is an out-of-state trip for our Strongsville girls varsity basketball team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the team to travel to Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus in Wesley Chapel, Florida, December nineteenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, to participate in their basketball program, tournament, I'm sorry. Transportation via commercial airlines, lodging and meals by participating students, fundraisers and funds from the girls' basketball booster account. And the last item for your consideration is the, a student-teacher practicum placement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that we have a following student placed for the purpose of a school counseling practicum. And they will be placed at Surar Elementary, January thirtieth through April ninth, twenty twenty-five. And it's a, uh, student from Grand Canyon University.
Any questions for Erin? Thanks, Erin.
Thanks.
Uh, next we have our student services report with Andy.
Good evening. I have one item this evening, uh, United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Cleveland. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Cleveland for specially designed instruction and related services to be delivered virtually via an online platform for a student with disabilities in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Virtual programming will commence on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four and will conclude on June fifth, two thousand twenty-five between the hours of one and three-thirty P.M., Monday through Thursday.
Questions for Andy? Thank you, Andy.
Thanks.
Next, we've got Ryan with the human resource report.
Good evening. Um, I have the following items in human resources for your consideration. Item one, resignation, non-certificated. Item two, resignations, certificated district substitutes. Item three, resignation, certificated athletic supplemental contract. Item four, retirements, non-certificated. Item five, appointment, certificated. Item six, appointments, non-certificated. Item seven, appointments, certificated district substitutes. Item eight, appointments, certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item nine, appointments, non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts.
Hey, Ryan, can I interrupt her just a second? So, um, it may look on item eight and nine that, um, the FTEs are a little different. Um, especially for wrestling, as we look at, at those, they're kind of in odd numbers, point one oh, point one five. So, um, I inquired a little bit and I think what happened was we had a, an assistant wrestling coach who was one of our district substitutes that, um, ended up getting a, a real job, a full-time job and a, uh, and is also going to coach wrestling in that district. So he ended up not continuing. And so, um, Jason Kepler worked really hard to try to fill, um, that position and then it impacted middle school a little bit. So that's why you see, um, they were trying to get as many coaches as they could to kinda step in. So Jason was a little creative in all of the FTEs to make sure that we had, um, you know, enough coverage. And so I added it all up and we have one head coach for wrestling and then the three assistants for middle school. Um, even though it's a little different, they were just trying to get the most out of, out of the supplemental contracts. Um, and then I think for the, um, the cheerleading coach for, um, seventh and eighth grade basketball cheerleading, uh, again, coaches are sometimes challenging to find. Um, we've had some challenges finding cheerleading coaches. Uh, so Kelly has offered to do both. Uh, and the reason one is the full and one is point seven five is because they do do some practices together. Uh, so we reduced it a little bit for that.
Okay. Item ten, appointment, certificated supplemental contract. Item eleven, appointments, game workers. Item twelve, changes in hours, non-certificated. Item thirteen, changes in status, non-certificated. Item fourteen, contract recommendations, non-certificated continuing contracts. Item fifteen, educational and experience upgrades. Item sixteen, leaves of absence, certificated. Item seventeen, leaves of absence, non-certificated. Item eighteen, unpaid leaves, certificated. Item nineteen, unpaid leave, non-certificated. Item twenty, volunteers, chaperones. And item twenty-one, volunteers, coaches.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Uh, next we'll bring Dave up for the technology report for the month.
Good evening. Tonight I have one item for your consideration. Um, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves entering a five-year contract for the purchase slash renewal of VMware Cloud Foundation. VMware provides a comprehensive cloud infrastructure platform that enables building, managing, and securing cloud environments. The annual cost is about three thousand ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents, uh, for a total of fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars over the five-year agreement.
Any questions on VMware? Mr. Miko?
No.
And we, we did ask, uh, parents received an email the other day about Senate Bill twenty-nine. Um, so we thought it'd be a good time for Dave to give a little more context to what that means from a parental perspective based on the new law, so, Dave?
So, uh, for Senate Bill twenty-nine, there's really two parts, uh, to it. Um, but one really doesn't go into effect till next August, so we'll talk more about that, you know, when it gets closer to that. But starting today, October twenty-fourth, um, the second part of Senate Bill twenty-nine came to effect, which, um, basically creates a, uh, educational record, um, that has to be un notified to parents. So there are something that is called a triggering circumstance and then, sorry, yeah, it's triggering circumstance and then a, um, circumstantial event. Trigger, uh, circumstance is for us, for our interpretation of the, of Senate Bill twenty-nine is when we get a Bloxy alert, um, those are our student safety alerts that we get um, from our students' activities on their accounts and/or on their devices. Um, there are three triggers that we have set up that principals and myself and, and Teresa Williamson get, um, that basically sends alerts to us that there was either some comments or searches done on something that, uh, dealt with cyberbullying, uh, threats of violence, could be, uh, s, you know, self-harm or to others. And the last one is mental health, um, and well-being. Um, so those are the three triggers that we have our filter set up for. We get those twenty-four, seven. Um, so our principals are in charge of taking care of, following up on those. Um, however, through Senate Bill twenty-nine, we have to alert a parent every single time we get an alert within seventy-two hours. Um, it doesn't matter if that, uh, alert is, I would say, credible. Um, sometimes you do get false positives, like, um, right now, our high school is, is working on some history projects that include, uh, topics, topics like, uh, the NRA. So, you know, weapons show up in their search histories and then we get alerts from, you know, a hundred and some kids that we then have to send emails out to their parents that your students were looking up, you know, threats of violence. Um, but the law itself doesn't separate any false positives or any events that the actual, uh, principal followed up on. So there will be more emails coming out to parents based on that. Uh, the other, um, circumstance that triggers a email is, um, a circumstance event, which basically means one of two things. A administrator or a teacher has requested that the technology department pull up a student log, like their history report or, or, um, you know, YouTube, uh, history or, or something like that that we can pull up through Bloxy, which are, uh, you know, our management system for that. Um, if we get that request, we now have to log it and then notify a parent that say, hey, you know, based on a, we, we called it administration, uh, access, the device or account for student activity. Um, they'll get an alert on that. Um, and then the other one is, as silly as it seems, the technician, sometimes we have to log into an account uh, for a student to see what their problem is, cause we can't replicate it. Or we have to log into a student's device, um, as ourselves to try to troubleshoot it. By Senate Bill twenty-nine, we have to send a parent a notice now of us trying to troubleshoot with a student account or device. Um, once, and in the letter, uh, it just says that we're, we're informing you by Senate Bill twenty-nine. If you have any questions, please follow up with your building administration, your students' principals.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for him on this topic?
That seems like a lot more work, huh?
It, it is a lot, um, considering that, you know, maybe some of our elementary schools, Mike, maybe get one or two a day. Um, but our middle school and high school can get anywhere between ten to twenty-five on a normal day. And days that we have like today where they're starting projects, we get like fifty or sixty. Um, because, because one or two periods, that's, that's how many kids are, are hitting the triggers. So, um, my department and I have been working on trying to find ways to automate it as much as possible. Um, but there still is some human interaction between programs and, um, creating the entries, um, to be sent home the notices.
So one of the things that's important to note is, uh, sometimes legislators.
So one of the things that's important to note is sometimes legislators pass bills that have an intent, but the way the language is written does not align to that intent, so they've recognized that for all of what Dave is saying with the reporting to the parents. So the goal is they're going to try to legislatively fix that prior to the winter break. So they said, the goal is that we would have to deal with this, these set of rules for the next month, and then in the lame duck session, they should pass it and have an emergency clause, which means it goes into effect immediately. So hopefully, we'll get some resolution to this current challenge in the next month.
Do we know if you've had any people reach out with questions or concerns yet?
Mostly from some of our teachers, because of the interpretation of the law has been different for different entities. So ours is because there's language in there that talks about non-commercial and like educational instructional use. Some districts are requiring teachers to notify parents of using things like Blocksi for classroom management of sharing documents, or even some districts are going to the extent of, hey, if we're using Google Classroom to submit an assignment, I now have to notify the parent that I have logged into Google Classroom of your student assignment. So being practical with the law, I don't see how a parent getting eight to fifteen emails a day saying, hey, I went on Google Classroom, your kid's Google Classroom, it would water down the intent of it, and then if there was something that was important, it might have been, it might be missed.
The last thing I would say, and Dave, you know, I know we've put this out in the past, and maybe we can remember to put it out in our next parent update. Parents have the opportunity to log in and follow their child's account through Blocksi.
Correct.
And so that would be, you would see exactly what we're seeing, besides the, hey, we logged into your computer to try and fix it. But that's a way parents can see exactly what we're seeing if they set up an online account and link their child to Blocksi, correct?
Correct. They can go on, the information's on our website, but they can always reach out, we can put it again in the newsletter. Dan put it out for about a month at the beginning of the school year. It's a great tool. We can't force parents to do it, but we do have a lot of parents that go through and sign up to get the alerts on themselves, and it also allows them to have control over their student's account after hours when they're not on campus. So if they want to limit YouTube or even saying, hey, I don't want you on your device after nine o'clock, it kind of creates like a soft lockdown on their account between certain hours when they're off campus.
Anything else for Dave?
No, I just wanted to, I know some of you will be shocked, but Dave and I have already talked about this, but I wanted to compliment and thank Dave. I think we have, you know, at the base of it, we are complying with the law as we feel it is interpreted. And that's not to be said that we're trying to skirt our responsibilities, but like anything, if you don't like an answer a lawyer gives you, find another lawyer and he'll give you a different answer. So right now, throughout the state, there's different guidance, but we have done that follow-up, so I want to assure our parents that we are following the rules. And the intent, I think at the end of the day, has a good intent, is to provide parents with information so that they can make good decisions for their children. And we'll work through the, a little bit of the bureaucratic mess that is happening, but a lot of times, these things address themselves over time. So today, you know, Dave and his team will have a bit of an administrative burden to send out these emails and alert parents, and in short order, those things will get automated, and the computers will take care of itself. But I do think it's a good thing for our parents to have another tool to be informed. And like I said to Dave, you know, getting a parent, getting an alert, we'll use the NRA example, lets them have an opportunity to have a conversation and say, what's going on? Why'd you search on the NRA? And because I have to for my class for history, and hopefully, that'll foster some good dinner conversation. So, thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. That concludes my report.
Any other questions for Cameron? Next on our agenda is report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell or Mrs. Hausum?
I'm going to do it tonight.
Excellent.
We've had a really exciting, about two months at Polaris that have capped off this week with a dinner. Every other year, Polaris invites all six districts and all of their school board members to a really lovely dinner that's prepared by the teachers and the students in the culinary program. So all of us, five board members and George and Cameron, and some spouses were available this week, and so we had a really nice time. And at that time, we also introduced the board's selection for the next superintendent of Polaris Career Center, and that is Diane Zander. So she is getting ready to take the helm after Bob retires on December thirty-first. So exciting news, exciting to look forward to what's coming next, and continuing in the fantastic fashion that Polaris has been for the last number of years. That concludes my report.
Thank you. If I can just piggyback on it, A, the dinner is always, it is a critical part of our job because we have to eat that dinner, and then we have to give good feedback to the students so that they can get even better. And I fail miserably every year to come up with good feedback, but it is great for us as a board to see what our students at Polaris are doing and what they're accomplishing. I wanted to also send our congratulations to Diane, and we're looking forward to working with her at Polaris. And I also wanted to give a public shout-out to Clark Reliance, which is a Strongsville company, and they were, it's a manufacturing industrial company located here in Strongsville, and they were Polaris's company partner of the year, probably two years, because we do it every two years, so. But a great company that we have here in Strongsville that's doing really nice things, employing our students and all the students in Polaris, whether it's the welding program, the precision CNC program, but it's a great example of Polaris when it's working at its best. So congratulations to them. And then next is report on legislation. Fortunately, I think, Columbus has been quiet of late for obvious reasons. We do have an election around the corner. Mrs. Pelco and I were at the West Shore Boards of Education meeting last week, and we got a really interesting, good update on all the legislation that we expect to have to deal with and work with for the next half year, the next year. The big thing that will affect our school district is the biennium budget, which as soon as the new legislature is elected, they will begin working on that almost immediately. It is election day. I know we probably have some updates on it in Dr. Raiba's timely information, but November fifth, Tuesday, November fifth, is election day. Most of our schools, all of our schools are used as polling, not all of them, most of them are used as polling locations. And I did this during the last election, and I had the chance to kind of revisit it, and so I will just share with the audience two historical messages. One is from Franklin Roosevelt, one of his fireside chats during World War Two. This one is October fifth, nineteen forty-four. He starts, "My fellow Americans," and the statement I want to highlight is, "Nobody will ever deprive the American people of the right to vote except the American people themselves, and the only way they could do that is by not voting at all." And in the address, he goes on, and I find this interesting, so you'll bear with me. He talks about in nineteen twenty, one of the most fateful elections in history, only forty-nine percent of potential voters actually voted. Nineteen forty, it was sixty-two and a half percent. I like statistics. Twenty sixteen, it was fifty-four point eight percent. Twenty twenty, it was sixty-two point eight percent. And then we will find out what it is in twenty twenty-four soon enough. And then the other historical presidential address was from Dwight D. Eisenhower. And this was September tenth, nineteen fifty-five. And in his talk, he said, "In the national elections, something like a little over fifty percent of all qualified electors vote in state and local elections. I am told that it is frequently as low as twenty-five percent." And then the statement that meant a lot to me, "Well, government by the people would seem to be not flourishing as well as it should. Some politicians, some politicians some years ago said that bad officials are elected by good voters who do not vote." And so I ask those in the audience, and I ask those listening at home, on Tuesday, November fifth, if you haven't done it already, go out and vote. And that concludes legislation. We now have our board liaison reports. First one is city council. City council did meet on Monday. I believe our own Dr. Raiba addressed city council and told a very good, shared some very good information about Emily and the effect that her education, what we're doing in Strongsville for that education, and how issue fifty-three will determine the consequences and what she can look forward to in the years to come. And I thought you spoke eloquently, and I thank you for it. In addition, city council wanted to remind everyone that October thirty-first is a very important day. It is Halloween. Halloween is in the city from six to eight PM, and the mayor wanted to remind everyone that when you're driving around the city from six to eight PM, please, please pay special attention because sometimes the trick-or-treaters don't. That concludes city council. Strongsville Education Foundation, do we have an update?
The same thing as I say every week, November twenty-third is casino night. Please, please go to their website, get a ticket, be a sponsor, do whatever. These people work really hard, and they really do subsidize a lot of the things that we do here in the school. So I encourage everyone to please go to their website and participate. It seems like, I couldn't go last year, I'll be there this year, but it seems like everyone had a good time. So November twenty-third, please go to their website. Thank you. That concludes.
Thank you. Sharon? PTA?
That would be me. The next meeting is November seventh. There really isn't anything much to tell for the PTA. I didn't go to the last meeting, so I apologize for that, but our next meeting is November seventh, so I'll have more to share then.
Thank you. Our board committees. Finance committee?
We have not met since the last meeting, and the next meeting will be announced.
That was an excellent report.
And I will just ditto that for the policy committee.
Another excellent report. Business Advisory Council?
We do not have another meeting until November eighth at seven thirty AM. In the meantime, since then, new business partners were invited to join the advisory committee, and that concludes my report.
And then Facilities Committee. Our next meeting is November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty PM in this building. It is adoption of the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in the agenda denoted as type action, which constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Some moves?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Gilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next on our agenda is superintendent's timely information. Do you have anything timely for us, Cameron?
We do have a few things timely to share with you. So as we go around the district and share some highlights from each level, we're going to start at Chapman Elementary School. So Andy's talked at length in the past about our PBIS program. In our PBIS program, we've used for years the acronym PRIDE, and each letter stands for a specific attribute that we want to exemplify in our students. So at Chapman this month, they've been focusing on the eye of pride, which is inclusiveness. So they've been, as you take a look at our buildings, you may see some matrices that are up that says, what does pride look like and mean in the cafeteria? What does it look like and mean in the hallways, at recess, in the classroom? So they've been taking a look at what inclusiveness means in those areas, and also linking that to our model Mustang competencies of being empowered or resilient, collaborative, et cetera. And so what they've been focusing on is how do we work through conflict or difficulty? So, you know, as young students, you may have some issues, I don't know, I'm going to throw one out there. Maybe the football game at recess causes some challenges. So how do we work through some difficulties and resolve those conflicts in a proactive way? And so this is something that's not just happening at Chapman, but across all of our elementary schools to help students continue to think and create solutions that will help them not only on the playground, but as they go throughout life. We'll now head over to the middle school. Mike talked about, if you remember when he was here, he talked about the vertical whiteboards and Lauren using those. Well, this is something that has happened at the high school and is continuing to expand at the middle school. So Mary Getz, one of our sixth-grade math teachers, is working with Amplify. That's new this year, right, Nicole? All right, so new math program, and so again, rather than, you know, kind of sitting there, learning the algorithms, going through and practicing a few problems and doing your homework on a few problems, there's less emphasis on memorizing those algorithms and more opportunities to get together, work, problem solve, and actually develop your critical thinking in terms of number sense and mathematics. So if you could see those little post-its, those are from Ms. Getz's class in terms of their experience with Amplify. So just, I'll read a few. "I love Amplify because it helps me and others learn lessons step by step, and they're fun, interactive, and Gizmo-like things, which is another math tool that we have." Right, Gizmo or Desmos? Oh, so Gizmos is, there are so many things sometimes I catch you with. Gizmos is science, right? Desmos is something else than math. So, and another one I'll read for you is, "I like Amplify. The questions and problems are engaging and creative. I love how it shows you correct and incorrect answers and how to get it." So great tool for our students that's being implemented in Mrs. Getz's class. Now, I've read Mr. Joya's work here a couple times, so let me try and summarize the great work that she's doing. And so I want to start with her quote at the bottom. So bear with me as I read it to you. "So experiential learning activities like this require students to use their previous knowledge as they engage in a deeper learning experience." This is a huge focus of our district of what we're trying to create for all of our kids. "It's rewarding to see students stretch their curiosity and start to make connections between what they are learning about mutations, protein shape, and function to authentic problems like curing or treating conditions or genetic disorders." So basically what they're doing, they're taking fifteen colored beads, putting them on pipe cleaners to represent different sequences of amino acids that are coded by DNA. They're bending them into different shapes, looking at the chemical properties and seeing how they bend and how mutations could affect or impact the protein functions in the DNA. If you understand what I just said, great. I'm a little fuzzy on it, Dave does, but it sounds really cool, and it's, what a great experience for our kids. Like, if you take a look at the big picture of it, I can learn about this in a book, I can have lecture notes about it, but to actually get touch, feel, you know, manipulate the work that they're doing, and for the kids to have that experience is great. So, you know, just thanks so much to Mr. Joya for the creative work that she's doing. Is she a part of our district learning team? So she's a part of our district learning team that is exemplified by our teacher leaders that are putting deeper learning into practice and being a model for others. And then finally, we have some timely information, although not on the slide. Greet and Treat is Monday, five thirty to seven, and the weather is looking spectacular. So it's always a popular event. We encourage people to get there early because the lines get awful long. Bring your kiddos out. I know there was recently a trunk or treat at Safety Town. This is the next in line of filling your homes with candy. So great partners, great event. Come out to the Pacotan Stadium and bring a donation for the food bank as it means to get in. Anything I missed on that, Dan?
Okay.
Other things, we've got, we've talked about issue fifty-three that's on the ballot, four point nine mil operating levy that's going to reduce taxes, the tax base for taxes on our community, and continue to fulfill great experiences and great investments, and even increase those if it passes. So we want to make sure that people have the factual information so they can make an informed decision on the poll, at the polls on November fifth or as they complete their absentee their absentee ballot. So, we will have a virtual community conversation. The first 50 people that log on will be live with Mr. Miko, right? I thought I saw you accept the invite. I treasure it, George and me, to have a discussion, a dialogue, and then we'll livestream it for anybody else that can't get on that would like to, to see, and so that, that will be there for everybody to join. So we, we look forward to helping answer some questions, get people armed with the facts as they go and vote. And as we come to the end of October and move into November, we do not have school on November 4th or 5th. We've traditionally not had school on November 5th because of the voting day. November 4th, we've added that as a professional development day for, so our staff are working on both of those days, but no school for kids on those days. That's it for timely information. Unless there's questions. All right, thank you, Mr. Miko.
Next on our agenda is Board of Education other. Do we have any others?
I'd just like to mention, there's a big football game tomorrow night against our rivals Brunswick, and it's the last regular season game. So, again, the, the weather is looking great. If you'd like to come out and support our team, I'll be there. So I'll see you then.
And then I would, we sent out, I sent out an email about adjusting our board meeting the November, what is the second, the date for the second one?
20th.
November?
20th.
The November 20th meeting. We're going to adjust the time to six, if, starting at 6:15 p.m. We do have reason for executive session, and then we would exit executive session and start the major, the major meeting or the regular meeting as close to 7:00 p.m. as possible. Did anyone have any conflicts, or can we do that?
That meeting's on a Wednesday.
Was it a Wednesday? I thought that was, it is a Wednesday.
November 20th, it's a Wednesday?
Is that, any issues? You can adjust the, you can, you can let your extraordinary assistant adjust the notices. And I was going to talk about the football game, too. There is rumor that there would, there may be glow sticks in case people are afraid of the dark. There'll be glow sticks being handed out at the meeting, correct? Or at the game. That's the rumor on the street. I was told there'll be glow, glow, glow sticks, so. So, if, if the football game and beating the tar out of Brunswick isn't enough, the glow sticks should be good. I have no any others. Next is meeting notification. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 p.m. in this building, and a regular Board of Education meeting, hot off the presses, will be held Wednesday, November 20th at 6:15 p.m. in the meeting room of this building. It will start at 6:15 for executive session, and we will start the public session of the meeting as soon as, as close to 7:00 p.m. as possible.
Hang on, Mr. Miko, I'm actually going to change it in the agenda.
I will be patient. Can you hurry up?
I'm getting it.
It's just informational, though, right, George?
It is, but it counts as a meeting notification as well.
Did you put glow sticks in there, too?
All right, I'm good.
It's going to start at 6:15, no, that's how you said.
The meeting will start at 6:15. We start all our meetings in public session, then we enter executive session, and then when executive session's over, we'll resume the public portion of the meeting. We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Gobain. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Gobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:20. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention. Please don't forget to vote.